For May 12th, 2021. Welcome, everyone. Let's start with, with role, please. Jackie, are you on?
All right, Michael Becker.
Here.
Todd Byerther. Greg Francis.
Here.
Sylvia St. Clair, I believe she is not going to be attending today. Tom Sanderson.
Here.
Carol Shuck.
Here.
Ruth Winger.
President.
You and Joanne Wright. Uh, uh. Thank you. I see you. Mary Winkus.
I'm here.
Lori Kneer.
Here.
And Jackie, did we, did we get Jesse on here?
Of course. Jesse Bank.
Thank you.
All right. So we do have a forum.
President.
Okay, thank you, Jackie. We have a busy day today, but like always, we're going to start off with an opportunity for public comment. If anyone would like to address the commission or something not on the, on the agenda, please, please, please just speak up. I don't see anyone who would. Looks out of, all right. Okay, if not, moving in the briefing session of with forum, let's do, let's first hear a motion to approve the April 28th, 2021 meeting minutes.
So moved.
Second. Okay, Michael, Greg, thank you. Any discussion or edits? Okay, all in favor? Signify, I say aye.
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 Any opposed? Abstentions, okay, so approved. City Council report with council member. Can you, um, come here, please?
Thank you. As you all know, the state legislature concluded their session last weekend and they passed several sleep accountability bills. Those bills are going to be reviewed by WASPIC and some of the other organizations around policing. And then our legal department will review those. Council president and the legal team are going to provide counsel and overview of the legislation and its potential impacts at our June public safety meeting. So that could be significant. I would urge you to watch those to see how that will affect the city. And then the American Rescue Plan, as many of you know, Spokane's going to be receiving about $81 million in federal COVID relief funding. This week, we receive it in two installments over two years. The council members and administration have been meeting to talk about priorities for the money. And the dollars will be directed to meet community needs following a public process. Federal funding can be also used to expand city programs and services that were curtailed in response to the pandemic budget impact and critical infrastructure needs. I'm advocating to make our city agency as an agency whole before anything else. It's kind of like when you're in an airplane, put on your own oxygen mask first before you help other people. So I'm hoping that will be the priority. Parks has been greatly impacted and so they're going to need funding back up to pre-pandemic operations. And then I think I already told you, we have a new city administrator that I met with, and he's very eager to meet all of you. So I'd urge you to invite him to a meeting. And hear what we all have to say and what's going on with the plan commission. And finally, we had council president, I had a meeting with the new utilities director, Marlene Feist, and water department person. And we are really working hard to get a conservation plan going because this is going to be a drought year. And we're looking at this summer, not just the five weeks of what's normal drought, but the months on either side of those five weeks. And he said five weeks, I said, you know, I'm guessing it's going to be more like eight or nine, and he didn't disagree. So we're looking at how to conserve water. And we all know that the biggest water use is irrigation during the summer. That impacts our aquifer. It impacts our river and our fire suppression, but it also impacts how we can grow. And that is part of the infrastructure we're going to need in order to accommodate more people here and water. And as you've probably heard, water is going to be the new oil in terms of availability. And as, as we run out, we're going to have to be more creative about preserving our resources and making sure everybody has enough. So that's it for me. If anybody has questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Council member, can you, in those discussions about drought, is, is there any consideration for air quality and what the city is going to anticipate this summer?
And. Oops.
For fire for a while there.
Yes, you know, we still have our GOAT project going on to hopefully mitigate some of the fires that are right in our region. Can't do much to control the fires in California or B.C. if the wind is coming our way. And honestly, it, it is a Spokane problem, but it's more of a Western problem. So we're, we're aware of it. We have a sustainability action committee that is working on, on scenarios like that because the air quality is, is a huge impact on people's health. And we know that lower income folks are impacted more by bad air quality. If you can't afford an air conditioner or can't afford to get inside, you're going to be impacted by bad air quality. So it, it is, it is on our radar and we're going to try our best to do what we can for Spokane.
Thank you. And then the second is, you know, life safety question, you know, the state building code council, we deal a lot with the wooie, the wild interface, wild urban interface. And, you know, I assume that falls under our, more of our code enforcement side of like rather than long-term planning, but we, we never see anything about that in terms of our long-term planning exercises on the commission.
Yeah, and that's, that's a pet project of mine because I think it's important that, and it's not just for the city, but for the region. We need to be aware of that. We need to be working with our regional partners, not just as a city entity. So we need to improve. And I will say that it needs to be a priority. And I'm hoping that we can get, go forward and work with our neighbors to make it so, especially our county neighbors.
Oh, thank you. I guess that was more of a comment than a question, but thank you for entertaining. Anyone else? Okay, thank you, council member here. I'm out of order here. Community Assembly, Liz, our partner.
I thought I was next. I, I just, I will just say that after asking Louis 150 times about when the interviews were going to be, we finally did the interviews this morning. So nothing to report on that yet, but, but I took place, I took part in it as part of the community assembly. So that got done. So, thank you.
Oh, thank you, Mary. And moving into the president for, yes, I also got to participate and represent the, the commission. And this was the external stakeholder holder group. So it was, it was nice to be in person and I got to sit next to Mary. So nothing, nothing I can think of to report from the president's side, except, you know, I, I didn't send a note to council member Kinnear this morning. And council president did ironically, the bill we've been talking about, Bill 1220, which deals with our housing element, our comp plan is, it's scheduled to get signed at 2:30 today. So I think that's, you know, it's something I follow closely and, and would like to talk more about as, as we move forward. Nothing else. We'll let Louis discuss our, our new commissioners in the secretary report, but let's first go to Cliff, please, for the transportation subcommittee report.
Didn't leave this month, so there's nothing to report.
Okay, thank you. And then our secretary part, please.
Yes, council on Monday approved the appointment of the two new plan commission members. So we have a full commission again. Jesse Bank, who is actually on the meeting, on and off, I've seen he's had some technical difficulties, but he's been on and off. And Tim Williams. So we'll be reaching out to them, getting them onboarded and up to speed here very soon.
Oh, that's great. And welcome, by the way, Jesse. And then are we, are we thinking next, next meeting to, well, maybe not next week, unless that's possible for a special meeting, but making a little time to introduce everyone?
Yeah, we can have that on the agenda. Yep. Some introductory time there. That'd be great.
Thank you.
I think that's all for me.
Oh, okay. So we moved through pretty quickly. Are, are anything else? Anybody feels necessary in the briefing session? Okay, moving into workshops real early, how do we want to play this? Is, do we have our city council members on or? I see council member Kinnear, anyone else?
We may need to take a break because I think they've advertised it as starting right at 2:30. And it's going to go till 3:15, 5:00. So we, we do have a few minutes to, yeah, discuss any other commission business. They were referring to the two planning director interviews that were being conducted today. So there's two finalists at this point that have been interviewed by an external stakeholder group and another round of internal group. And I think there's going to be recommendations coming forward very soon to fill that position. We do have a few people signed up to, to speak to the downtown plan update and we'll be tracking that too. And I know Jackie will be on board on if any additional come in. So at that, at the right time, we'll be calling on public testimony for the downtown plan.
So Todd, did you finger, figure out when I should give mine on behalf of a neighborhood neighbor?
We did talk about Louis. Do you want to comment or?
Yeah, I think that'd be most appropriate to, to go in deeper at the time of public testimony for the downtown plan.
So, so I can speak on behalf of Carol.
Yeah, were you able to find the email at all?
No, of course not. But I haven't had a mo, I haven't had a moment to look since either. So I just barely got home and had a little lunch and then turned this on. So. But I can get, I could get her to send it again, but it depends what happens as far as action today.
Uh, Mary, who's, who's the person? Maybe I have it. I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Sorry, Carol Tomcik?
Oh, I think I might have it. I'll, I'll check.
In the public comment document, Carol has testimony from May 8th. From an email.
Okay, let me double check that. Maybe it's there.
Yeah, it was in the one that was just sent out like last hour.
Well, that would explain a lot as far as my not seeing it.
Okay, thank you. So Louis and, and Ameron, is there anything you want to, you'd like to set up, maybe related to the housing action plan? Before we roll into a discussion about, since they are pretty related.
Yeah, so the housing action plan, as you know, the draft was really released on Monday to the general public. Sorry for the short timeframe. This will be just a quick introduction. Once again, a summary of the process and the high level clip. We really hope that you all have time and we're going to deep dive into the document at a special meeting next Wednesday. So we're hoping everybody can make that special meeting, which will be really a deep dive to give you time to read the document thoroughly. And then if all goes well there, we will see if you're ready to take that hearing at the next regular plan commission meeting.
Will the council not see this until after? I mean, they have, they have access to it, of course, but will this be presented to council until after these two commission meetings? Workshops?
Yeah, we spam them documents, so.
I could, I could address that a little bit. We just haven't had time to schedule with council yet. Look forward to doing that. We've just been really working hard to get it completed and online. And of course, your, your process, the plan commission does proceed going to be council. So we'll, we'll have maybe by next week, we can give you details and, and share with, if there'll be study sessions or any other council time that they can also listen in. And of course, there will be a hearing for the council also.
Council president, this is Carol.
Hi, Carol.
Hi, did Louis, did Louis say there's a meeting next Wednesday in reference to this?
That is correct. We discussed that at the last plan commission meeting about having a special meeting, trying to move the housing action plan along. We were going to hold a special meeting at the regular time next Wednesday.
All right, thank you.
So Louis, will that be two to four?
Correct. It sounds like we would like to have some time for all the commission members to kind of introduce each other to the new commission members. And then right after that, we will dive right into the whole rest of the meeting so far is just the housing action plan.
Yeah, there's a hearing scheduled for that day.
We can talk about it till we're blue.
And then I, did I miss it? Is, is it idea then the next meeting would be a hearing? Or is that jumping?
The commission's comfortable. Yep, that, that's our goal.
We, we have noticed it because of the notice requirements. So we have noticed it from the 26th. But of course, if we need to move back to a later date, that's certainly possible.
And is that a commerce deadline we're trying to hit?
Yes. Yep. The goal was to have that wrapped up in June. If we need to, we will talk to Commerce about extending that timeframe that we're trying to keep close to that so we can get on to implementation of it.
I don't think I'm going to be able to make next week's meeting. So, but I will study hard and and try and catch up with what happened at the meeting too, you know, afterwards. So.
Yeah, we'll build a send out a video link to the meeting itself so you can watch at your own leisure.
Okay. All right, thanks. Todd, I just, I just looked and Carol's comments are, are in that document that's 60, 70 pages long or more. So, but what she sent me is there. So I think we're covered. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
And Todd, I just sent it, I just sent her comments to you as well.
I just saw it. Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Anything else on the, on the housing action plan? Or we want to save it for scheduled time? Okay. Well, congratulations if you didn't hear me earlier. I'm getting now. It's a significant document and a big, big milestone.
Yeah, thanks. It's, yeah, besides Maron, I mean, we've had several other staff assisting as well. So it's, it's been big.
Now it shows. Thanks.
So thank you for that.
Okay, well, if not, we can, you want to take a couple minute break here? Sorry for the speeding through it, but we'll just pick up and okay, if everyone can come back. Welcome. We just took a break for those that are just joining us. We've got a little ahead of schedule. So we're, we're into our, our first workshop item, which is a combined usually our quarterly joint city council plan commission meeting. We, we decided to hold it during our, our typical plan commission time. So welcome, city council members. Specifically, we are targeting to discuss our, our work program, which, as you know, we, we made a recommendation as a commission about a few weeks or a month ago. It went to the council for consideration and then a, a few amendments were proposed. So is it best, Louis, should I hand it to you to, to maybe set this up?
Sure. So when the plan commission's recommended work program went to council, council had kind of high level discussion about it. We had council member Cathcart had wanted to add a couple items to the work program. And I believe at the time, council, the rest of the council didn't fully understand what was intended by those additions. And so this meeting was to dialogue about and maybe flesh out in more detail what those items were and whether they should be added. Council president, you want to weigh in?
I just am joining, so I didn't hear what the issue or the question was.
Thank you. Welcome, council president and other council members. We were just setting this up. Just for background for everyone, my understanding, at least of the processes is the, you know, a lot of, a lot of the elements on the work plan for the commission are driven, you know, as, as staff items that then look for consistency from the plan commission, recommendations to the council for action. And, and then there are other elements that, you know, could be seen as broader, you know, comprehensive plan items that, that could be deeper dive. So I think kind of setting up the context of where we are, a lot of, a lot of the elements where we're really not in dispute, I'll say. But maybe we can leave, leave, leave it to council president or, or council member Cathcart, if you'd like to discuss more about the, the amendments.
Well, I would, I would just set the the context for me is council member Cathcart and, and some other people, I think, support diving into some other issues, but there's only so much time the plan commission has that get anything done in a particular year, given your meetings. And there's only so much staff resource to do all the work that goes into plan commission actually doing it. And so we're down several planners. There's some talk about hiring some, some of them back. And I just wanted us to have a kind of a unified conversation of plan commission, council members and some staff. Mostly Louis as acting or interim director to just make sure that our expectations were sharing the same factual page if, if possible, or as close as possible. So that, that's why I'm hoping that we would meet today. So. But open to anything else from anyone else?
Yeah, I'll just, I'll just add, I mean, I think obviously we have an emergent need on, on the housing supply issue in the city of Spokane right now. And I mean, really the region, but the, the city is the urban hub of, of the region. And I think we have to set ourselves up to address these issues. And it could take some time to, to really vet and look at, at big ideas. And, and so to wait until, you know, maybe the comp plan gets back, opened back up, it's just, it's just kicking the can too far down the road. And I think, you know, we have to, to be able to, to start addressing these really quickly. And so that's why I quit for the amendments that I did. There are four originally. One of them probably will, will take a different route, I think, to get done. And, and the other it sounds like is being done through developer services. But the other two, one focused on density and zoning and the other on land use efficiency, I, I think would provide an opportunity for the, the planning commission to take a broad look at these really important topics and bring the council back some recommendations on how we can improve the, the code or perhaps some, some comp plan changes that need to be made to, to enable, you know, a larger supply of housing to get, to get built in a, in a good way for our community to address those affordability and, and choice issues. And I think, you know, we, we lack a lot of flexibility in our code in the sense of, you know, we have a pretty strict, you know, four to 10, single family zone. And there's a single family compact, but, but a lot of communities have a variety of options with single family, just, just that alone. And I, I think we, you know, we're, we're missing that. A lot of communities offer a, a lot of different housing products within a single family zone and we're, we're missing that. And so I think there's just an opportunity to, on a broad based way, allow the plan commission to just take a, a look at these issues and bring us back some recommendations that would really start to make a dent in addressing the, the need in terms of housing.
I, I asked Michael this to translate for me a little bit. It's a layperson on that. And I'm just going to repeat kind of Michael, what, what I took, took away from you today, just in case anyone else is the same. So on the first thing, it's looking at how do you increase the density of single family? So instead of four to 10, maybe it's up to 15 or 18, essentially smaller lots for our single family homes and more options of duplexes and triplexes within those, within lots. So, and what parts of the city would that be workable in? So that was one kind. And then the second was regardless of that, maybe changes to minimum lot sizes, floor area ratios, and again, just being able to maximize the use of land, which is a slightly different thing. So the, if I'm hearing you, Michael, what you're saying is you want to explore that in some ways from a high elevation, but then end up with some proposals for specific changes that could accomplish that. And so.
Yep, absolutely. And I think the plan commission is a, a great venue to, you know, really dive in deep, look at these, you know, have that public engagement piece and, and bring us back some good solid recommendations rather than us telling you, you know, to be very specific in things to look at, like give you guys the ability to bring those recommendations back to us so that we could, I think, think about those in a broader view.
Okay. Council member Kinnear.
It would be helpful, I think, for us to hear from Louis as to what some of those things that, that council member Cathcart proposed. What is already in the work plan that's perhaps worded a little differently? Or perhaps we need to expand on something that was in the work plan? And if there are any downsides, downsides to what he's proposing, that there would be unintended consequences down the road. And I don't know the answers. I'm just, I'm throwing it out there, but I'd like to hear from Louis as our interim planner on those things.
A, a lot of what is being talked about right at the moment is kind of baked into this housing action plan that's coming forward. The commission is, is, that's been fully released to the general public and the commission is starting to talk about that today. Commission's holding a special meeting next week and hopefully the week after that, there will be a hearing on that and then it will be coming to council. A lot of this discussion about middle miss, missing middle housing duplexes, triplexes, different densities is discussed in that document too. The thought process in our work program idea is we're going to be wrapping up the downtown plan and we'll be wrapping up the housing action plan itself. That will free additional resources where then we can have a, a continuing dialogue with council and the plan commission about what policy changes to explore right after that. Some of that is already baked into that housing action plan for discussion.
And I have a follow-up, Louis. So I read through the housing action and, you know, all those things that Michael talked about plus more, they're kind of listed in there as potential ideas or suggestions. They're not really recommendations at this point, a lot of them, and which seems appropriate because it's just the draft release. But when we get to the, the end of the housing action plan and we actually approve it or accept it, will some of those be recommendations? Like, let's just say council member Cathcart's recommendation that we increase typical single family density higher than four to 10, you know, 10 to 18 or something like that. Would that be the sort of thing that would be in the housing action plan once we've done that, if council says that that would be in? And then it would lead to the, you know, the actual writing of the ordinance or standards and adoption and more public engagement.
Our thought was the housing action plan would be approved with these ideas in it. And immediately after that, we would sit down with commission and council and kind of go through and prioritize which ones you want to bring forward for community discussion and informing.
Okay, so so if I'm understanding, it's kind of a continuum of like, all right, here are the ideas. Next step is council would say these are the top five we want you to focus on and making them real. I'm, I'm using five arbitrarily. And then staff and plan commission would go down that road.
Correct.
And then when is, when is that likely to occur as far as the plan come to us and say, council, pick your top five or 10 or whatever? When, when's that going to?
Yeah, if plan commission acts on that at the end of this month, you could see it in June.
Okay, okay, okay.
Council member Stratton, please.
So Todd, earlier before this meeting, you sent out an email regarding the state legislative action that was taken. Is everybody aware of that and? Is everybody aware of that? And are we going to obviously find a way to blend that into what we're doing?
Yeah, maybe.
I don't know if I worded that right, but.
No, thank you for that. And, and maybe I'll give a little more background. We've, we've talked over the last, you know, couple of months about, about that specific legislation, but the general topic of, as, you know, we look at items that are, are going to be in the, in the housing action plan, which is, is primarily driven, you know, of course, by our professional planners or, or, or staff, right? Are there, are there other broad elements that, you know, we as a commission can contribute to with staff? That allows us to, to look at these, these deeper issues. Cause as, as you know, that, you know, that legislation is targeting the periodic updates for the counties in, in the, in the state that have to plan. And there's an urgency in Olympia because some of the, the, the bigger counties in, on the west side are ahead of us and have to do their period, periodic update in 2024. Ours is in 2026. So the, the bigger question there is, is there an opportunity as, for, for us as Plan Commission to also be a safe space in the city to have this public discussion and, you know, these broader topics well ahead of when we have to do it. But can we do it now while we also are talking about these implementation items that are going to come out of the housing action plan? And some of these are in, are in as, as, you know, as possibilities, you know, not recommendations yet, but, but are considerations in the housing action plan. They, they all go together. What a, what a piece I would say there is, I think part of the discussion I would like to have maybe as an individual commissioner, not necessarily as consensus, you know, from the commission is, you know, like other cities like Tacoma or Seattle, where the commission then does make their recommendation along with the staff recommendation. And there's usually 95% overlap, but those are both, you know, official positions.
Thank you.
Oh, so quickly to, to summarize that, that specific bill, House Bill 1220, which is, is scheduled to be signed right now, ironically, by the, by the governor. Specifically targets the chapter, the housing element in our comprehensive plan. And it, and it gives guidance to say shall rather than, you know, recommend, you know, consideration for multiple levels of affordability. And for also looking at, you know, exclusion and displacement and so forth. A lot of these topics that are coming out also in the housing action plan.
So I would, I would just say, I think a concern of mine is, is having these big ideas kind of lost in that, that action plan. You know, I, I think one, one concern I have about the housing action plan is simply the, I, I see it as an underestimate, underestimate of the need that we have in, in the area for, for more housing. And I worry that that might sort of influence to a certain extent, you know, what the solutions are that you're, you're, you're going to prioritize if you don't think the need is as, as big as it may be. So certainly a concern overall, I, I think that, you know, I wouldn't want these to get lost. And I think there are some low hanging fruit in, in the housing action plan that could be addressed probably fairly quickly. Whereas these are probably a little bit bigger and will take a little bit more time to go through the process. And so to me, it makes sense to, to execute on these now, get them in motion. And then we can, we can start implementing the, the lower hanging fruit that's, that's in that action plan.
I'm wondering again, just trying to translate between various voices. If we were to put into the work plan specifically to, that as part of approving the housing action plan, we identify the priorities around zoning densities and I'm forgetting the overall term for the efficiencies of.
Land use efficiency is what I said.
Oh, say that again?
Just land use efficiency.
Yeah, land use efficiency. So zoning densities and land use efficiencies. If we just put in the work plan that we will identify those upon, as we approve the housing action plan and then delegate that to the Plan Commission to flush those out. So that's just kind of where my brain is taking me so that when we approve the housing action plan, we are approving again, the top five to 10 strategies for quicker work than the overall thing.
I think that could definitely be a, a phase, yeah, at adoption time. Kind of go through, highlight within the housing action plan, which, which pieces you want council would like to move forward quicker with. That would also help inform, you know, the public as to what's going to be discussed and coming forward.
Okay. All right. Right.
The commission had placed a, a star underneath the housing action plan for housing action plan implementation, missile, missing middle housing. That's how they were describing it in the document that came forward. But if that needs further clarity, I think that's great.
Right? Yeah, I'm wondering, maybe just inserting another bullet right after that missing, missing middle housing one that incorporates that. I mean, there, I think there's some overlap between missing, missing middle housing and what Councilmember Cathcart's referring to, but maybe we just have it as another housing action plan implementation for land use efficiency and zoning or.
I think as much detail at this point would help bring clarity to everybody involved in the general public. What, what policies, yeah, are we thinking of diving into? That was meant to happen right after the housing action plan adoption, which was kind of gather all the ideas, put it in there together. And then immediately after that, begin tackling what the community would like to address.
What if you just say I zoning and density review? I think that incorporates those key elements.
Yeah, you know, what I, what I might add here is I, I think my, I think the opportunity here, not a concern, but the opportunity here is as we start to discuss as a community, the specific implementation items, there really are two different starting points, in my opinion. There's, there's one that's, we're under our, our current existing, you know, comprehensive plan so forth that we, and we, we're going to operate completely within that. We're not going to go through a, a kind of a major question of zoning reform. And the second one is where you open up that opportunity and do comprehensive plan amendments now or in the next, you know, five years, addressing the housing element, the land use element and so forth. And, and those, those could lead to a couple of different results or different pathways that we would go. That being said, opening up zoning reform is, is a sensitive subject and it's going to, it's going to initiate immediate responses, but we need, in my opinion, we need a safe space to, to have those kinds of discussions and, and, and and I feel like commission is, is an opportunity where we're not fully exposed.
I, I'd like to weigh in a little bit too. I, you know, I agree with everything everybody's saying, and I think that you do need to kind of prioritize the low hanging fruit. I agree with Councilman Cathcart on that. And what, what is more long-term? And I think the more detail though, that we get into would help the staff. I mean, the staff's going to be supporting us. And so they need to know what they're looking at and how much time it's going to take them and whatnot. It'll take some time to get down the nitty gritty about hours and number of staff people and, you know, length of time and all that. So I think those initial discussions should probably, we should try and weigh in a little bit more on the details of, you know, the categories maybe, and then have them weigh in too, after they've kind of discussed how much time they think they can devote to this because it's, they're the people that are going to be doing it. So, yeah. And what I'm hearing Louis say is that more specific we can be as council, that, 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 that will inform him and then he can respond to that. And I'm just, it sounds to me like most of what the proposed amendments are, are arguably within the work plan as long as you interpret the work plan as implementing the housing action plan recommendations, but that as currently imagined, there's going to be a big list, broad list of recommendations. And what staff is asking council to do in, in June is set the priorities for which of those to pursue first with the planning commission. And assuming that there's four council members that can agree on, on those priorities, then I think we will get there within the work plan that we're talking about. It's just that we, there's a, there's a major subheading that's undefined until we figure out what of the options in the housing action plan, we want them to focus on in 2021 and, and beyond.
Yeah, we believe the focus right now is on that housing action plan and as a part of that deliberations and adoption coming up with the priority policy subjects that we want to pursue. Some of them, I mean, the housing action plan is largely fitting within the current comprehensive plan. There may be a few ideas in there that are pushing the boundaries and may, might take a comprehensive plan amendment. And so that, those are the big, big pieces that I think we got to get council guidance on. Are we starting to go that far? I think.
So it's Karen, bear with me because Louis, you know that I'm always learning this stuff. So we're talking about all of this and, and I guess my issue is timing and how long this takes. I mean, we have a definite shortage of affordable housing right now, and we're getting funding, you know, for some of that to start, to start developing some of that. I mean, how long does all of this take till we can get to a point where we can start seeing some action? The community can start seeing us meeting those needs of the affordable multifamily and affordable single family homes? That, that's what I'm concerned about at the end of the day. When we can start seeing a train moving forward with that, with that product on its way.
Things that are consistent with the current comprehensive plan will be able to move forward faster. The, like the, all the infill pieces that were adopted in 2018 and implemented. We're starting to see the development community using those tools now. There may be another round of those type of amendments and tweaks that are consistent with the comprehensive plan. If there are bigger community discussions about amending the comprehensive plan to, for example, to eliminate single family zoning that's been banted around, that I think is going to take a bit longer, community wide discussion. We need to be able to have that, the avenue and venue set up so that the Plan Commission and council can hear the public's voice in that capacity. And there's going to be, we're, we're reaching the point of infrastructure capacities also, and that needs to be weighed to where we're not encouraging the development community to run out and try to put something in where there's not existing utilities to support it or transportation. When we are running into those issues at this point, so.
I think another thing, Councilmember Stratton, is that the capacity to do some affordable denser multifamily is already there. I mean, there's already the land available or, you know, could be found. So I think there are opportunities to build affordable multifamily already. It's just getting that missing middle component that has more affordable ownership options. That is where I think we're quite weak on.
Yeah, I had, I was looking back at what we've done. And so, you know, two years ago, we essentially increased the capacity for multifamily housing by about 50% by changing the height requirements from two stories to three stories. And we haven't quite seen the developers go into that. But the year before that, we increased the ability to do smaller units, smaller lots, more compact. But that was within not all single family residential, but within some distance, either inside a center or corridor or within a distance. But I've, I've lost track of what we landed on. Was it an eighth of a mile from the border or a quarter of a mile? I wonder if someone can.
I remembered as a quarter mile.
Yeah, it's my memory too.
Okay. So that's just now. And I remember at the time our staff said, and we told people, it will take a while for the development community to adapt to those new opportunities. And that's not a, that's not saying that we don't need to immediately do all these things. It's just understanding that whatever we do, it's a two, three or four year process lag time and before it, it, it comes up. But we have, we did make a lot of changes that were requested and now there's more on the table.
I, I, I wonder if right before this meeting, we had a little meeting and Tyrell, you said something about the numbers that Chris Becker gave us, but you, we were getting numbers that were a bit old. Could you repeat what you said?
Um, I think maybe we could do numbers at another meeting and, and be accurate about what are.
Yeah. Chris Becker is reporting on the permits that have been issued, but there's quite a few permits in the pipeline that aren't reflected in those numbers. And so that, that'll be showing up here probably even next month or two, as those permits are issued, both on multifamily and single family.
So a reason I wanted that to be said, I think it's important to know that things are moving forward. Maybe they're not moving at the lightning speed that we would like, but they are moving forward. And when we get the numbers from Chris next time, I think everybody's going to be amazed at how we're doing. So I'm going to throw that out there. No, it's not, it's not everything we want, but it's, we're moving forward quickly.
So maybe all, this is Todd, I'll, I'll add another way to, to look at this is to consider what our peer cities are doing. And, and in this, we see a, a pretty significant trend towards implementation plus zoning reform. And so I, I think it'd be worthy of us to at least consider those cases and assess, you know, objectively what cities in, in Washington and, and in particular California, because Oregon already was, 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 was pushed down at the state level of, of what those cities are, are pursuing. So that might be a helpful way to also while we're looking at implementation items to, to compare.
Yeah, Tacoma is having a dialogue throughout the entire city about basically eliminating, you know, exclusionary, single family zoning, allowing duplexes, triplexes to go in everywhere where single family is allowed today. Seattle hasn't gone that far, but that there are other entities. Olympia had a, a rounded discussion and, and that was largely repealed. So it's a controversial subject, but that, that's probably the kind of the firewall that's built into the current comprehensive plan. We do allow attached housing through a PUD. You can do unlimited attached, single family houses. But they're not technically a duplex, triplex or fourplex or some kind of plex in our code. So in our single family zone, we're, we're not really seeing the development community asking for more density in the single family zone. And we really even haven't heard that they want additional housing types. That would be more of an infill type product. Cause your production builders want to do apartments, you know, easier to manage and, and less costly for them to manage. They don't like little onesie twosies out there. They don't typically do that. So you'll see smaller infill developers trying to do a, a triplex or a sixplex. We could open that up, you know, some communities have discussed in larger new plats, allowing more of a mix of housing types still within the density range. So you could do single family and then, you know, plexes mixed in within that. We don't allow that today. We do, like I said, allow attached houses. So sometimes from the street, they all look the same, but you don't know the underlying properties arranged. Or do we open that up citywide? That'd be another, a big community discussion. I think there would be council will get an earful if that was opened up citywide. But I think Councilmember Cathcart had mentioned maybe that there are, the cities broken up in the single family zones and a couple of different types of zones, different densities being allowed. So that could be all on the table.
Louis, I would just, one thing is I, at least the folks I'm talking to, I mean, they're, the development community is begging for changes. I, I mean, we just had a study session last week and, and that was shared with us is, you know, that they need some pretty big changes to address the, the supply issue. So I respectfully disagree. I, I think there are asking for, for some, some changes to our code and, and to address those, those concerns. I mean, the, I think the Realtors just put a pretty big report on how much housing, you know, they, they project that we should have been building over the last 10 years. And when I, again, when I meet with individual members of either the Realtors or in the development community, I, I hear very different.
I agree.
That's very well.
Yeah. Hi, everybody. I was just coming off some interviews with a, a planning director candidate. So that was a good thing. I'm sorry I'm late. I, I just want to say that, um, I think it's always important to take a longer view of these things. I agree, some of the things that are lower hanging fruit, even if we did away with a single family zone today, it would take decades to create the kind of density that we're looking for now because of property rights and people who own and live in most of those single family homes are not just going to go sell their house and turn it into a triplex, uh, and move somewhere else because they need somewhere else to go. So I am very interested in seeing what the new numbers look like, uh, coming, I have heard this as well. Uh, I think we will be pleased to see that, um, some of the changes that we had in the pipeline are starting to work. And I also, uh, would like to, um, recognize that we're coming out of a pandemic where people couldn't move really. And, and they couldn't even show houses, uh, the Realtors couldn't. So understanding we're in a very interesting spot and we are starting to see things move. I don't know about you, but when I drive and walk around and see a lot more houses for sale now, I see some things are starting to move and I'm seeing things being built. So I'm in for the long haul on this, but I'm willing to work on the, the short-term ones as well. But I don't think we want to burn our precious time on things that are maybe two to 20 years out. Uh, I'd like to take care of some of the stuff that we could do right away.
Tom?
Thank you. Um, I think I have a general question that I don't know who would be able to answer this. I'm, I'm thinking maybe Louis, I also think maybe, uh, uh, Michael Baker might have an answer here. But speaking of just generally noticing things going on, I'm noticing in the region, not, not so much in the city itself, but in the region, um, there's a lot of multi-building going on, um, a high-density building going on. And I'm wondering if we foresee some alleviation to our problems, specifically in the city, some of our housing needs because of the amount of building that's going on outside of the city. In the valley, for instance, there's lots of, uh, uh, complexes going up around there. Louis, do you happen to know if there are things in the works that, that are in the region that could be helping to alleviate some of our problem numbers? General question. Thank you.
Yeah, between Spokane County and Cootney County, the, the amount of building permit activity is increasing to reflect, you know, to respond to the demand, so.
I have a question about why we're meeting, you know, today because we're talking about the work plan, I believe. I was okay with passing the work plan without the prioritization, just to get that to you. I just wanted to ask staff, would you prefer that we take the time to do the prioritization with the Plan Commission and then pass it? Or would you prefer we pass the work plan as we've already worked through the list and then take a couple of months to finish the prioritization? What would you prefer?
And Candace, I'm, I'm not trying to undo your question, but we did kind of come up with a, a compromise on that before you got on the phone, which is pass the work plan, but with a little more defined placeholder for that prioritization.
Perfect.
So I think that's correct. Yeah.
I think we'll, after, when the Housing Action Plan is to counsel, right after that or at that same time, we'll be talking about specific policy pieces to move forward to, in more detail than what's in the work plan.
Okay. Any, anyone else?
Yeah. All right. So I just was, wanted to say this has been a helpful meeting. I really, for me, got what I wanted, which is I wanted the Plan Commission, the council members and staff to just kind of get on the same page. I think we're a lot closer, we're a lot closer than the language reflected now that we have a better mutual understanding of that language. And also because the draft Housing Action Plan was released, that, I think that freed things up. So, uh, kudos to the team for getting that. So it sounds like we can put just a little bit of language on the attachment A, pass the work plan, and then when we're looking at the final Housing Action Plan, doing our priorities within, that will just slot into the Planning Commission work plan because they already have that placeholder for it, so.
Greg?
Um, one thing we haven't discussed is the, uh, NEPDA. That was another item that council member Cathcart had brought up and I, I did read the, the memo from Louis. I guess, can we speak to that one real quick?
Yeah. And, and, um, thanks for bringing that up, Greg. And I, I think it's really, really important that we are able to plan the, the NEPDA. At least that's, that kind of, we're calling it the South NEPDA portion where we're really trying to see a mixed-use residential, almost a neighborhood, you know, really kind of cultivated there. So I think it's really important, but I talked with the council president, I think shortly after our previous meeting on this, and we'd kind of talked a little bit about the possibility of using some, some dollars maybe coming from the, the, the relief fund towards helping assist in some of these issues. I mean, the NEPDA has been hit pretty hard because of COVID and it's made it really difficult to, to, to do some of the recruiting and some of the investments and stuff there. And so I think there's a nexus for us to be able to maybe do some of that planning, uh, using those dollars. I, that's what we had talked about. I don't think there's any firm, uh, way forward, but, but that had been the discussion point.
So we've kind of taken it off of putting it on the work plan as the normal order of business for now, but not put off the problem and try to find another way to do it outside of the normal process for now.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, anyone else have any comments or concerns? Council member?
I, I have a comment. Actually, I just want to thank staff. I know you guys are working so hard and trying to do so much with so little. And just know that it's appreciated and it has not gone unnoticed. And the same thing with the Plan Commissioners, you're, you're donating your time and it is appreciated. So thank you. And it always seems like when we come together, we come up with a solution. So I'm, I'm grateful for that as well.
Agreed. Likewise. Thank you. Okay. If nothing else, I think.
Well, we'll leave you to your business. Thank you so much for all that you all do. We really appreciate it.
Appreciate everyone's time and for scheduling us. Thank you.
Great to see everyone. Bye-bye.
Goodbye, everyone.
Okay, commissioners. Any final comments? Anything not expressed or expressed?
I was just going to make a comment that, um, uh, Candace was correct that we do have more homes for sale. We're now up to 392 homes for sale in the entire MLS versus 209 a week ago.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, you know what? I, I guess this would carry into our next, our next, you know, item, right? The, we're, we're, we're going to, oh, go ahead, Greg.
I, well, I have a question about that, Michael. I'm, I had read in some cases that people had gotten so far behind on mortgages in other markets that it was cheaper to sell out so they could, you know, pay off all that back debt than it was to, uh, to try to recover from it. Have you heard anything about that in our market?
No, no, not really. It's, it's, most of the folks over here who are underwater, were underwater well before COVID. We've had some people, particularly some of the landlords have, have gone into, uh, some severe debt problems, but, you know, it's, it's just the average numbers.
Okay. Oh, thank you, everyone. Um, I hope everyone felt like they could get a chance to, to speak. If not, let, let me know, um, and we'll, we'll facilitate a, a better way. Okay. We'll roll into our next agenda item, um, which is the Draft Housing Action Plan. So good, good timing. Thank you for sending it up. And, and, uh, we welcome Maren, please.
Yeah, thank you. Good afternoon, everyone, um, those tuning in. My name's Maren Murphy and I am a planner with the city. And we've already talked a little bit about the Draft Housing Action Plan. And as Louis mentioned, that we just sent it out on Monday, so we know it's pretty fresh. Uh, but we do want to share an overview of the plan organization at least today and then touch on the priorities, knowing that we will have a little bit more time next week. Um, so to start, I would like to share a brief video that we made, uh, for this plan to kind of, um, give some consistent information. Uh, so one second. Oh, hold on. I need to make sure I share with audio. Otherwise you'll just see it.
Today, the city of Spokane is facing housing challenges that include low vacancy and high costs. Housing affordability is critical for all residents to thrive and is the foundation of a vibrant and resilient Spokane. The city of Spokane has prepared this draft Housing Action Plan with the support of the Washington Department of Commerce Guidance and Grant Funding to help identify actions that the city can consider to increase housing options that create more homes for more people. The purpose of the Draft Housing Action Plan is to consider actions that will promote greater housing diversity, affordability, and access to opportunity for residents of all income levels in Spokane. The dropped plan includes data from the Housing Needs Assessment, community engagement, and stakeholder feedback. The Housing Needs Assessment helps define the range of housing needs by analyzing data that describes the city of Spokane's housing and associated demographic, workforce, and market trends over the past few decades. The city also conducted an assessment to understand potential displacement risks in the community. As high demand for homes drives up housing costs and increases pressure for higher density redevelopment, many residents and policymakers are concerned about the potential for displacement. The city of Spokane has outlined four priorities in the Housing Action Plan identified through analyzing housing needs, community engagement, reviewing local policies and previous initiatives, and considering best practices from other jurisdictions. Priority A: Increase housing supply options and affordability for all incomes. Strategies include expanding allowed housing types throughout Spokane's neighborhoods, targeting efforts to increase the development of affordable housing, and encourage the development of accessory dwelling units. Priority B: Preserve existing housing affordability and quality to help people thrive where they live. Strategies include growing city programs that support homeownership, including the single-family home rehab program, enhancing support for renters, and maintaining and improving affordable rental housing. Priority C: Enhance equitable access to housing and homeownership. Strategies include addressing housing inequities, reducing barriers, stabilizing the viability of existing homeownership, and supporting shared equity homeownership models. Priority D: Leverage and grow partnerships to support housing initiatives across the region. Strategies include working with sectors like health, education, transportation, and parks to support housing and expanding use of housing data. Each of the strategies will be vetted and undergo their own adoption procedures. It is also important to keep in mind, there is not a single solution. Multiple strategies can work together to shape opportunities for development and encourage the kinds of housing production that are in greatest need for the Spokane community. The entire community will continue to play a critical role in implementing the priorities and strategies. We encourage you to visit the project page to review the Draft Housing Action Plan and share your feedback on how the city can further meet housing needs today and in the future.
All right. Um, well, thank you to, um, Channel Five for helping us out with that. And, uh, that's going to be, that's on our website now. And so it gives a, a high-level overview of the plan and I'm going to, um, go into a, a tiny bit more detail on the process and then, um, describe the priorities a little bit more. So, uh, I just wanted to refresh us on the timeline. Uh, we started just about this time last year, um, on background research and forming our project team as well as our staff's, the, and stakeholder groups, and then moved into identifying housing needs and data collection. Uh, at the end of 2020 and early 2021, we began discussions around policy solutions and had a series of workshops with both the Plan Commission and the City Council. Uh, and then we worked internally to develop the draft plan for the last couple of months, and which brings us to today with the draft plan out for public review. And as we talked about, will ultimately be considered through the Plan Commission through workshops and a public hearing and then forwarded to City Council for adoption by resolution, uh, which is anticipated in summer 2021, which is just about a month away. So, um, big part of this has also been, uh, engagement and outreach, uh, over the last year. So as I mentioned, we have our project page, uh, to host information and materials throughout the project. We had a number of internal discussions with staff and formed a broad, multidisciplinary team across departments. We connected with stakeholders and gave updates, presentations to boards, councils, and commissions, or one council and many of the commissions. And we also had a Housing Action Plan Working Group, which consisted of community organizations, builders, nonprofit housing advocates, realtors, faith-based organizations, community members, agency partners. We had about over 70 people on our working group list. Uh, not all were able to come to every meeting. We had about 30 to 40 that attended each meeting. But we did send out regular updates and tried to keep everybody informed. We also completed a series of roundtables in the fall with about 100 stakeholders and city staff that were in depth discussions that helped us understand the challenges facing housing in Spokane and begin to think about community solutions. We also had a set of community surveys that helped capture housing experiences and issues from the community as well as a housing industry professional survey. And with those, we heard from about 1,300 people across all the surveys. And then we also, and, um, we also had, uh, blog posts on key topics, social media posts, and press releases throughout, around key milestones. So we tried to, uh, keep everybody updated, uh, throughout the process. And, um, of note, you know, this was virtual engagement, obviously with COVID. So, uh, we relied on technology, um, and tried to, uh, make the most of our, our platforms that we've had at the city. And we, of course, deeply appreciate everyone's time, attention, and participation throughout this process and know that there's a lot of energy to see housing solutions moving forward as we talked about with City Council. Um, I've showed this before, but just wanted to orient ourselves, uh, when we were developing the Draft Housing Action Plan, looking at what influences the housing market, knowing that there's a lot of different factors. So specifically, what can the city do to influence and encourage development of additional affordable and market rate housing and preserve and deepen current affordability? And as the video mentioned, um, just highlighting again that multiple strategies can work together. So the Draft Housing Action Plan, uh, this is a image of our cover, uh, provides guidance for city staff, our elected officials, appointed officials, decision makers to help better meet Spokane's current and future housing needs for people and families of all incomes. And I pulled the table of contents as well, just to kind of show a little bit about what's in the plan. The draft itself is about 60 pages and then we have a lot more detail in the appendices. We have an overview of the purpose and background of the plan, including a discussion of previous initiatives, uh, just acknowledging that there's been a lot of efforts over a number of years to work on housing, uh, outcomes of housing solutions. And so we wanted to reference those and, um, kind of bring those into this Housing Action Plan. We also have a summary of housing needs and findings, including things from the engagement efforts as well as the displacement assessment, displacement risk assessment. And then of course, the bulk of the housing, is the housing priorities and strategies. And each priority has a focus. And then we finish with implementation and monitoring to help us realize the outcomes of the plan and help move things forward. So here's just some sample pages. Uh, there's no way around it that the plan does have a So here's just some sample pages. There's no way around it that the plan does have a lot of information and is of a lot of data that is referenced. We did try to be mindful to develop a narrative that connects the major themes that we learned to the strategies, the priority strategies and actions. And we also have some graphics and images to help illustrate important, important points throughout. So hopefully people get a chance to dive in and look at the work there. And then the draft plan is available for download on the city website at the URL listed here. I dot SpokaneCity.org backslash housing backslash Spokane dash housing dash action dash plan. And you can see the video is on the website, and then we have a What's Happening Now section, and then the Draft Housing Action Plan, again, that standalone plan, and then each of the appendices. And then, of course, we have all of the project materials on the page as well with the documents from the project. We have, and then on the side, over on the sidebar, information about how to comment, which I'll touch on shortly, as well as if people come across the page and they're not on our email list, a place to sign up for updates. Here's a list of our appendices. Again, a lot more information in the appendices. We've talked about all of these throughout the process and hopefully you've had a chance to look through them independently as well. So not a lot of new products here, but referencing the work that we have done throughout the process. And again, these are available for download on the project page. So just a quick overview of the document organization. And again, we talked about this initially when we were looking at policy solutions with workshops. And this seemed to stick as we developed the plan. So we have priorities which are the overarching themes. And each one of, so we have four priorities, and each one of those has a number of strategies that we tried to categorize ideas and input that we received, things from previous initiatives, from the Housing Need Assessment, from the Commerce Guidance, the Washington Department of Commerce Guidance, looking at our policy review, and then, of course, what we heard from the community. And then the strategy, underneath the strategy, there's a narrative that gives a little bit more context to what's being discussed. And then we have some actions for consideration. And as we said, that as the Housing Action Plan is adopted and moved forward, each action or strategy that's undertaken will have its own public process of review and adoption. And so that's why we sort of organized it the way we did and had those actions for consideration. So I know the video mentioned the priorities and we talked about them here. I do just want to click through them as well. So for priority A, this is looking at strategies to support the availability of housing options and encourage the construction of both affordable and market rate housing. And there is, as we talked about previously, a focus on the missing middle housing type within the plan. We kind of talk about it. And looking at diverse housing options and considering how the city can help encourage that. Also looks at the need for affordable housing for people and families of all income levels, both in rental and homeownership markets. For priority B, this highlights the connections between housing affordability and quality and acknowledges that when we plan for both addressing, when we plan for both housing affordability and quality, we can address the availability of housing for mixed at income levels and then also increase housing options available throughout the city in each neighborhood. We're also talking about access to safe, affordable housing choices, support for tenants and property managers, and then the preservation of existing housing that is already affordable. That was another big theme throughout this process, not just about development of new housing, but how do we help maintain what we have. Priority C is seeking to understand and consider the historic context and intentional policy and zoning decisions that help or that have contributed to patterns of inequity throughout the city, encourages the city to consider actions that work to break down structural barriers to housing and ensure that they don't serve as impediments to accessing housing opportunities or moving into homeownership if desired. And also encourages the city to continue to expand on the displacement risk assessment to deepen understanding of the causes of displacement and how those might feed into further considerations and policy decisions. The displacement risk assessment was sort of a first kind of analysis that we've done at the city. And there's a really great foundation to start with, but a lot of room to grow and a lot of more understanding that we can do there. And then priority D is looking at new and expanded local and regional partnerships to help tackle the full scale of housing challenges based in our community as well as across the greater region and looking to continue participation in multi-jurisdictional efforts to address regional housing needs where appropriate and feasible. So again, the plan is available on the website, available to download, all the appendices as well, and project materials. So encourage, who haven't clicked through it yet, to do so. Next steps, then we, so we talked about the meeting next Wednesday, May 19. Before that, we're having a two online open houses on May 18. So they'll provide a similar overview with community members that we are doing today and post question and answer with the community and staff. And we have details and registration on the project page. This will be conducted over Zoom. And as the, as I shared, that this process has been a real cross-departmental effort. So we have some of our partner departments joining us for the open houses to help field any questions that may arise. And the focus of the open houses will be to convey about the draft housing action plan and then encourage people to comment. We do invite the public to review and provide feedback. And comments can be emailed to SpokaneHousingPlan@SpokaneCity.org. And then, of course, there'll be additional opportunities to testify at upcoming public hearings. And then that will bring us to the next day where we have the special meeting with the Plan Commission to dive into more detail on the Draft Housing Action Plan. And then depending on those discussions, we have the tentative May 26 Plan Commission Public Hearing, which will then feed us into the City Council process. So just for you all, just to make sure we're all clear. So the next step will be next Wednesday, the special meeting. And again, knowing that the plan was just sent out Monday, I think, end of day Monday anyway. So it's been out there for just, you know, 24 to almost 48 hours. So recognizing that people may have not had a chance to look at it, and so wanted to give an overview today of how it's organized and then know that we'll have more time next week for deeper discussions. So that, that's where we're at.
Thank you, Maren. So we actually do have time. So we have a good half hour, leaving a little time for a break before we get into our two hearings today. First of all, any questions? Thank you, Maren. By the way, congratulations. This is an enormous lift. And it's, it's, it's a very thoughtful and well put together document for everyone involved. So Greg, first, please.
Yeah, I'll agree with Todd for a change here. I, it was a pleasure to read. I'm the question I have is regards to the implementation matrix. And it is that going to be fleshed out more? I mean, it seems like it focuses on a lot of the short-term activities without much on the longer term changes that might require, you know, comp plan work or, I mean, I found under the strategies and potential actions, there was a lot of discussion about potential comp plan changes that might have to occur. But I didn't see anything with any implementation matrix that really made those actionable.
Maybe I could answer that for you, Greg. I think what we were kind of struggling with is, as you mentioned, some items that have yet to be scoped and would be adopted through their own process may have certain implement later measures of monitoring the success. So we did try to broadly look at, at how we could increase our monitoring more efficiently as the plan, as the comp plan states we should be doing. So so we've, we've done that. We haven't scoped what monitoring each strategy would look like. That would be more appropriate when we actually adopted or acted on any of those. Did that get to your question?
Kind of. I just, I guess my biggest concern is that people look to the implementation matrix as these are the things that we need to do. Yet I don't, but for the most part, those with, fit within the constraints of the comp plan. I'm, I don't feel like it really, some of those potential comp plan changes are in the narrative, which is great. But when people look to, how do we, how do we make this happen? I just feel like the matrix doesn't really capture some of the more substantial changes that might need to occur. And anyway, so I'm not sure how to capture that. That's just a concern that I have coming out of it.
Well, we know that Greg has gotten to the very end of the document, so.
Yeah, I might be glad to put that up.
To bring it up.
If you, if you're willing, please.
Yeah. And, and so, yeah, I can, let me just, I actually did put, put it in the PowerPoint just in case it did come up. So let me grab it here. And, and then I can kind of talk a little bit about how it is organized and move myself there. Um. So this is, I transferred this over to a table, so, and blew it up. It's smaller if I were to just pull it up. So it's looked similar to this in the draft plan, but there's, I just have the first three up here for now. But, so the implementation matrix, as, as you say, Commissioner Francis, is looking at up here at the top kind of potential first steps. So somewhere we're to open the draft plan and look at all the ideas. Aside from actually going through and waiting or prioritizing the, the strategies or actions, which we just did not have enough time to do within, within this process, we looked at them and tried to think of what might be a potential first step, hence the title there, that could move the conversation forward. And so then we have starting timeline and that's, we break it down in the draft plan, but short term, I think, was one to two years midterm, three to five, and then long term, longer than that. And so when would this effort likely begin? And then what would the investment be? And that's sort of a composite of staff time, resources, funding, you know, is it a new program that would take a lot more effort? So we did go through and kind of identify what were those, what might be one or two actions that could be a potential first step to move forward on the strategy? And then what would those components be to do that? And so it is a lot of the short term, just because that does align with potential first steps. But I think that this is also an area where we're welcome to get feedback on. And, you know, thinking through what might be after your conversation with council, you know, what might actually be potential first steps, certainly reflecting that within the implementation matrix would be really good. But that's kind of how we approached it at this, at this time.
I'm just wondering about potentially adding, I guess, a table two, like longer term steps that basically summarizes all those potential heavier lifts. And, and because I think this does a really great job. This, this, the implementation matrix is going to be what people, I think, will zero in on because it is so, it's very well done, okay? And you know, the Reddit term is too long, did not read, right? So, so people, you know, rather than reading through, you know, 55 pages document, which has a lot of great material in it, they're going to jump to the summary and they're going to think of this implementation matrix as the summary of all the potential actions that could occur. And, and while it contains a component of them, you know, some of the first steps, it doesn't contain some of the longer term steps, I think that might be. Even when you see some items like A6 is a long-term step. You know, so it says long-term. So people might read that and say, well, these are all the steps. These are all the potential steps. I'm, because there's some short-term, some midterm, and some long-term. And so they may not see some of the other items that I think have a substantial amount of merit, but they're not in the matrix.
Yeah.
Um, can I say something to you? I think, you know, if you get, if you're starting to get real specific about all of these steps, you run the risk of leaving something out. And there again, you know, we want to get in a big conversation about, well, gosh, you did these six, seven things, but gosh, you didn't think about this or that. I think what would help probably is maybe if you don't have it already, a little introductory section to this section saying this, what the purpose of this and what it is and what it isn't. And it isn't, you know, the end-all to this plan. And you know, it's, this plan is meant to be a stimulus for further action, both short and long term, that kind of language maybe would help. But I, you know, I think when you start listing things out like that, somebody's going to get upset if something, you know, if one thing's left out. So just keep that in mind, Greg, that, you know, I think you need to kind of be careful about when you start listing things out, you can get almost too specific and kind of closes the door on other things. So just my two cents.
Yeah, that's a, that's a great point. I'm, I'm just looking at the things that are specifically already called out within the plan. I'm, you know, and, and it certainly is not going to be all inclusive. There's, you just can't put everything in there, but there are some broader topic issues that I think might need to be in there, or maybe there, you know, again, potential long-term steps or something like that.
Yeah. And, and I think, um, just thinking about particularly, I'm going to jump back particularly in like A1, there is a spectrum of ideas there from things like code changes to, you know, the reviewing density levels in the comp plan. And so acknowledging that the community conversation around those haven't been fully, you know, vetted or engaged at this point in time. And so wanting to include that spectrum for further direction or guidance, but not honing in on one, one or the other, though the conversation that the Plan Commission City Council just had about, you know, maybe when adopting the draft housing action plan, identifying some of those priorities upfront could help with that. So yeah.
Yeah, I'd be curious to hear from the commission on, so, so I agree with some of the things Greg's saying, and I was thinking back to the housing infill project that concluded with a table, except that table had columns I have in front of me. You know, here is the impact, high, low, medium, maybe moderate. Here's the feasibility, so forth. And, and here are the goals that, you know, addresses in the comp plan, right? Or that need to be changed. Like I could imagine in this one, it says, okay, this one, you know, H2 is in the way. We need to therefore trigger some consideration of H2, or we can't do this, this implementation piece, right? And then what came to mind with me was and getting to my question for the commission is, you know, on the State Building Code Council, when we deal with the energy code, we have very specific targets that we know we need to get to by 2030. We need to reduce, you know, energy usage by 70% relative to the 2000 We need to reduce, you know, energy usage by 70% relative to the 2,000 whatever baseline. Okay, so having a housing action plan implies to me that we need to take action on housing. And I know we're, we're having this public debate about, is it X 5,000 houses or 10,000 or 30,000, right? But regardless, we should be able to say, if we did something, we think we can get 2,000 houses, housing units. And then we can debate about how, how many we need later, but we can say, if we did this element, it would be this. And then, but I think to feed off of Greg, those can be lots of the little things that are day jobs that we should be doing anyway, maybe, right? Because we just, we caught them here in the housing action plan. But it also should be those things of, what if we built everybody public, you know, a, a house? I mean, we're not going to do that. But the, when we're talking about like energy, for example, we say that, what if we replaced everybody's gas boiler with so forth? It would cost $3 billion, but it would solve the problem, right? So those are kind of, I'm kind of curious on thoughts that came out of this, that one of those big moves would be that we might not do, but we'd, we'd learn from.
I think, I'm not sure this plan addresses, I think that's getting kind of down in the weeds. And I, you know, I would go back to what Carol had to say about, if you're going to start like another plan off of this plan, another step, another process, you would go into those kind of details then. I, you know, I don't know how much time staff has to be amending this plan to be talking about what you aren't doing. But that would be, in my mind, something that follows up on this plan, I mean, getting that, in that kind of detail. I mean, it's, you know, I don't know, what does, Carol, I would go back to what you had to say and what you think about, you know, that. I mean, I, because I just think it belongs in somewhere else, I guess.
Yeah, I think, well, Councilmember Keneer wants to speak, but I, I do think, I'm assuming most people haven't read it yet or read it in detail. So when you get to A1, well, you will notice that is the most sort of development code heavy strategy. And we did try to break things down quite a bit in that one that we did not do in other, other strategies. So we could talk more about that at our next meeting. But we, we did try to do that in that one specifically that has a lot of comp plan over cross.
Councilor K?
Yeah, thanks. So this would be an easy thing to do. As Todd, as you and I were in the interview this morning and somebody asked, what do you mean? I think they said, what do you mean by missing middle or what do you call affordable? And it occurs to me that this is going to be read by the public. And there are going to be those kinds of questions when we refer to affordable or when we refer to missing middle or any other other jargon that we all know what it is. It would be really helpful if we put an appendix and just define some of those terms so that people weren't left scratching their head going, am I, am I one of those people that could live in affordable housing? Or am I the missing middle or whatever it is? I think it'd be really helpful and make it more understood by, by the public. And therefore, when it's better understood, people tend to accept things better. And when they ask questions, they ask the correct questions.
And just to answer that, missing middle is really well defined, I think, in here for the most part. And as well.
I, I disagree. And I think it's, I'm saying every piece of jargon, when you say missing middle, it means something different to me than it might to somebody else. I would like, I would just like an appendix of all of those.
Mary, can you mute?
Excuse me, a glossary of terms, which I've asked for from the beginning, because I don't know what affordable still means. I've, I've helped people get into housing that make $200 a month for rent. I mean, is that, are they going to have affordable housing? At the same time, our costs are jumping exponentially, exponentially. So I think we need to say what affordable is, because affordable might mean for somebody that they spend 200 a month or something. If that's where their perspective is, and I don't think we've answered that. And Maren, it's not just up to you to make those decisions, but I think as a city, we need to talk about that.
Well, I, for, I will say that there is that section on AMI. And so I, I think it, I think some of that is addressed in terms of definition of affordability, right? From a HUD or Paul's Solicitative, yeah.
We do have a table in, in the draft that shows.
Okay. Well, there are some people who don't even have an AMI. They don't even file taxes.
But it's a good point, Mary. I wasn't, I wasn't disagreeing with you.
This is why I think there's, there's people out there that refer to it as attainable housing versus affordable housing. I'm, I know that the state likes to use affordable housing. And so there's, there's a lot of value in using that language. Because something that's affordable for one person certainly isn't anywhere close to attainable for the next person. So I, I know we've had this debate for, I think, five years. Ever since I've been involved, that what is affordable housing? What does it mean? And I think I have a fairly good handle on it now, but only because I, it's been smacked over my head so many times, so.
So since we're going to revisit this in a week, can, can someone, staff or other commissioners and so forth, maybe try to outline what, what the recommendation will be from the commission to the council on this. What does success look like? You know, for, for everyone to communicate, six staff and commission to the council. In our action, in the commission's action.
This is, this will be, the recommendation is that the city council adopt this by resolution. So it's not a binding action by city council, which is appropriate since this is still such a high level planning document. Just, does that help a little bit, Todd?
It does. And maybe I'm asking, you know, in that previous meeting, there's a lot of weight putting on this, you know, which is, is, is good. It's a significant contribution. You know, along with other things too, right? The infill recommendations from 2016 and, and other things. And, and so how do we best, you know, frame this to say, this is what this is, council? And the commission agrees with the staff, you know, assessment of what this, what this is, what it recommends. Because what I heard today was a lot of prioritization that is going to happen based off of, built off of this, right?
Yeah, this tries to discuss the universe of public input and programs that we know we have and guidance from the state currently. And then after this universe is defined and recognized by council, we plan on having further discussions on next implementation items. Not only tied to land use regulations, but also other subject areas of implementation.
Yeah, is it, because you know, it's, it's gonna, it's gonna affect the commission's decisions on appropriation and of, you know, time and money, right? You know, for both staff and, and commission. And so is there consensus of this, that should this be the, the guiding document of how time and money is spent over the next year for both, both our, our groups?
I think this document was designed to help inform next steps. It doesn't define what the next steps or even the priorities are. So we're going to need to have that conversation with the political leaders and, and yourselves, hopefully in dialoguing about what the next items to tackle are. Like that gets into the political realm very quickly.
I have a question. This is Carol. I may have missed it somewhere, but has there been any projection on how many affordable housing units are needed? As of today?
Is there a number? Question in the needs assessment, I'd have to tell you number. You can find that in the appendix in the needs assessment.
Okay.
Yeah, appendix A on the website. And I think you have that in, in what was sent out in the email pointing to the document takes you to the webpage. And then it's in appendix A, the housing needs assessment defines. It's based on assumptions also, but based on those assumptions, it defines different categories of housing and possibly what types of housing might be able to be satisfy that category.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we're, we're coming up to our hard stop and maybe should allow for a little time. But is there any other feedback from commissioner, from staff that we want to give leading into next week? I'm looking forward to aggressively going after this. Tom?
Thank you. Um, this is probably not a, a, a good time to bring this up, but when I looked at the work group participants, I didn't see any representation of labor or organized labor. And I'm hoping that maybe during the implementation portion, if there will be some, some more stakeholder groups put together that, that maybe labor can be included in that portion.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Tom. Okay, with that, let's, let's continue next week. Thank you, everyone. And everyone on the commission, please stay on. We'll just take a, you know, a five minute break here and come back and we'll start right at four o'clock for our, our, our first, our first hearing, which is the six year program. Okay, thank you.